Let me ensure that.
Yeah.
Story with trustee Taylor, Miranda?
He's gonna join after Ron's presentation.
For the marijuana.
Okay.
For the marijuana and for Chris's tips presentation.
Alrighty.
Karen Blakemore, early on, did I, is that the case?
She's on, yeah.
Excellent. Hi Karen.
You have Billy, Jim, Karen, Linda, Bethany, Roger, and you, so you actually have seven.
Everybody but Jim.
We are.
Everybody but Jim. Chris Pratt, Chris Pratt.
Everybody but Chris. So far.
Chimes are going. So, uh, let's call the planning commission meeting in order. Are you ready Cynthia? Are you ready Miranda?
Yep, we're ready, ready.
Take the roll Cynthia.
Thank you Chairman, planning commission meeting. Sixteen twenty twenty at seven oh one P M. We have a full house tonight it looks like, Chair Cornell.
Here.
Vice Chair Williams.
Yeah.
And down the line Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Giblin. Commissioner Giblin? Well, sir.
Billy, you're supposed to press star six to unmute.
Alright, you were. Commissioner, I can, yes, hi. Commissioner Glasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herring? Commissioner Herring? Okay, I'll circle back on that. Commissioner Reese?
Can you hear me? Oh, okay, great, I'm here.
I marked you down. Commissioner Reese?
Perfect.
Excellent. Vice Chair Williams?
Uh, here.
And do we have Commissioner?
No, he hasn't called, so I think he's absent.
Okay, no worries. Do we have a trustee Taylor tonight?
He will join after the quasi judicial agenda.
Excellent, okay.
I didn't get his Billy Giblin here?
Yes, he, yes he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. So we have a quorum, so the first item is approval of the minutes of the meeting for November eighteenth. That was one of our quick needs, anybody want to make, is there any changes, or anybody want to comment? Any additions or changes to the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve the draft minutes of November eighteenth twenty twenty?
My motion that we approved the minutes from.
Second.
I'll second. Steve Williams.
There we go, Jim and Steve. They, uh. Roll call Cynthia.
Alright, we're gonna go backwards. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Parry, have you joined us in the interim from ethers? No. Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser? Commissioner Glasser?
I wasn't present.
I got to. Oh, you weren't present, okay, abstaining, I got you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Giblin? Chair Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Uh, very good, so the first item on the agenda then is. Consideration of special review use for paid parking in Central Business District. With Ronald Mitchell making the application. Staff, who, who's gonna present the aim, is that Cynthia?
Yes. Yes. So before we, the aim is presented, I'd like to make a statement. About my ability to participate in this decision. And Miranda, I can email this statement to you, so you don't need to. Write down everything I say. Last August, the planning commission was considering this land use. And at that time, I wasn't on the commission. But I did send an email with my personal opinions on the application. I understand that now as a commissioner, I'm required to listen to the facts as presented by the applicant. And to consider the information presented to the planning commission. Then I am to apply the criteria in section sixteen fifty-five of the Netherlands Municipal Code. To the facts and information that has been presented. And I agree to consider the application in this manner. I haven't prejudged this application, I'm not biased for or against it. Or for or against the applicant. I will be fair and impartial in this matter and decide the application. Based on the facts and information presented. And the criteria set forth in section sixteen fifty-five. For special review uses. So if, if no one objects, I will participate in this discussion and in the decision.
Okay, if anybody disagrees with Karen's comment, speak now or ever hold your peace. Thank you Karen, that was very, very professional.
You're welcome.
Okay, Cynthia, let's proceed.
Hey, real quick, this is Billy Giblin, and I guess Karen, I guess by, by setting that tone, um. Gotta make it clear that I was. Also submitted a public comment, I was actually at the, um. Hearing with planning commission when this came up last time, um. And I too. Um, and confident I will look at, you know, I will base my decision on sixteen fifty-five and, um. Um, can make a clear decision on this. This time around.
Commissioner Giblin, this is Jennifer Madison.
I wasn't on the planning commission when I made the public comment, and I am now, so.
And, and just a follow-up question, this is Jennifer Madison, Commissioner Giblin, um, can you? Have you prejudged the application, or can you look at the facts as you hear them tonight? And, and you will not have prejudged it?
I can, I can hear the fact that they're presented tonight, and I have not prejudged it, and I can make a decision based on. What's been presented so far and what I hear tonight.
Alright, very. If I don't hear any objections to anybody from anybody, then we will proceed. So Cynthia, let's move forward.
Sure, so, this is an application by Ronald Mitchell on behalf of the. Business District Redevelopment LLC. They desire to repropose paid parking use upon his lots in the CBD zone. That would include kiosks where people can pay for parking. The use is not specifically included within section sixteen dash thirty-two use groups. It comes closest to actual activities or establishments which require special review use approval in CBD zone. Mitchell previously proposed this idea in twenty nineteen, he was recommended for approval with. Commission. He had changed, uh, elements of it in between the planning commission and the board of trustees. And he was asked to repropose the application at a later time, and so he is coming forward at this time to do so. He's worked on the application in the interim. Although he was diverted helping out his tenant businesses during and since the pandemic began. His revised version includes traffic driving orientation changes upon the lots. And he's gonna further his idea solidate recycling operations instead of at each business. His narrative provides his intentions to improve the traffic circulation and safety upon the lots. While they offer paid parking that serves. Mitchell expressed concerns that he would like the SRU to be transferable if the property. Alter used. And meeting any conditions, and this would obviously not be the case if the property were to. As regards the application, it was noticed on the property in the newspaper. To the, uh, neighbors in the three hundred foot buffer. Steve Pelletier from Public Works and Rick Hendrickson tonight, and they can also speak. Respectively to any events they have in their department, I see Chris is here. Sure if Rick has joined us yet, I know Rick and, uh, oh, I see he is, uh, he has joined us as well, so they. From their perspective, on the consideration of what is being proposed in the orientation on the lots. And other aspects, um. So I will answer any questions from a code perspective if you have them, or I can wait, and I can turn it over to Chris if you want to. Um, hear from him first and then direct any questions to staff.
Okay, well, this. Sure, if Chris doesn't come to this time, if that appropriate, that would be fine, let's hear the presentation.
Alright, thanks board and thank, thank you Cynthia, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear Chris.
Perfect. Um, yeah, I have some concerns about this proposal. Um, and I apologize in advance for not getting these concerns into the packet sooner. Um, but after. Second review, I looked at the first time, I concerns, and some of them were addressed. Um, but I've realized some other areas of concern in this proposal, so I'll just get right to it. So in the packet tonight, there's a draft special use agreement. Um, and in the term ten conditions, it states on number three, the applicant shall comply with and shall ensure that the property is compliant in all material respects. With all applicable laws, rules, regulations, including but not limited to building, zoning, rights of way. Sidewalk nuisance, floodplain, floodway, health regulations, and any other rules and regulations. When requested by the town, reasonable proof of such compliance shall be provided by the applicant. So, um, that's tonight. The, um, section sixteen dash two oh one, snow storage area shall be equal to ten percent of total area of required parking spaces. I'm gonna share my screen, um, one of the advantages of COVID, it seems like, these days is that, um, you can. Um, actually get picture in front of people, which I think is really helpful, so let me, let me just do that, so bear with me for a minute. So on this plan, does everybody see it? On this plan.
Chris, it's not showing yet.
Do you see it now?
No, so you click share, you click share and then double-click damage?
Yes. Alright, let me try again, you see it now?
No.
I'm gonna hit share again.
It feels though.
There you go.
See it?
Yep, it's coming.
Alright, perfect.
You might expand a bit, Chris.
Yes. So, in this plan. It doesn't identify any area for snow storage. Um, and that's required, um, as per the application and in per code. Um, and by contrast, later on tonight, I'll be presenting a plan in which I'll provide, you know, an area for storage of snow. And it's actually not even a parking project. Sidewalk project, I think it's important, uh, and when developing a piece of property, whether it's a makeshift parking plan. Or, um, a full-on development of a, of a building or several buildings, um, that we follow the, the code and provide. And provide these requirements within code, so I, I don't see snow storage. Section sixteen dash two one zero, adequate drainage facilities shall be provided. And, um, there is no drainage plan here, um, there's no, uh. Contours, um, and for example, I can give you, um. A, an example, in the summertime, uh, I'll go and I'll stripe the sidewalk on First Street. And in order to stripe the sidewalk on First Street, I've gotta clean this, the, um, the street off, so that I can do that. Because all the dirt from these lots sheet flow across particularly in front of Wings of Lace and. And the current Cat Mandu, uh, restaurant, and cover the, the, um, the road surface with dirt. And then, so I clean it off and then I stripe it. Then it rains, and it happens again, and so to the point I just made a moment ago. Um, any development that, uh, is being proposed tonight by the applicant, I believe should contain, um, these aspects. Um, regardless of what the, uh, the development is, so. There's not bad in this, and I think it needs to be. Also, I have noticed in this plan, that there are, and I'm gonna zoom in. Seven spaces, they're actually outside. I apologize. They're actually. Outside the boundaries of the property, and here in front of you, you have the spaces for Ubon and shift parking. This bold dark line is the property line, um, however, these spaces are outside that property line, and it doesn't matter to me how little they are. Um, they're outside of it, and if we're considering, or if you are considering a plan. Um, in which the applicant is gonna charge money for, um, parking, it shouldn't be on the town's property. And so I think these five spaces should be removed from the plan. Similarly. Over here by the Peak Animal Hospital. The same thing happens here. It's just a very little bit, and I think compromise is fine if, um, if the applicant wasn't charging. B for these spaces, but that's not the case, um, here tonight, and these two spaces here are actually partially outside the. The applicant's property, and therefore I think they should be removed from the parking plan. Um, I also wanna point out that, in his narrative. Base. Proposal touts back in parking will be uniform throughout the project. Entire project is designed to be back in parking. So I go through this, and realistically. Well, first of all, realistically, this is not a design, this is boxes drawn on a piece of paper. And, um, hopefully the information provided tonight will inform the design, and he can come back with a better proposal. Um, however. You look at this, especially, and I'm just gonna take right here for example. Um, to be able to back into these spots, first of all, you can't drive in conventionally, and then be able to back into the far spots. Um, on the western portion of this parking lot, on the east side of the Peak to Peak Animal Hospital, it's not really possible. What would have to happen is, a car would have to be out here in the street. Pull ahead of the parking area, and back all the way in, in a, in a U-turn type fashion, it's actually a fairly technical way to park. And now, I don't doubt that back in parking can be a really safe way to park, and that's not what I'm contesting here tonight. I just think that the. The way you do it is important, and I don't think that it's being properly done here tonight. Um, again, over here, um, in block five, in the picture in front of you. Peak to Peak Animal Hospital, he's got these double-decker, um, parking and shift parking, and he's got these two-way arrows here, it's very tight. I don't see that realistic, that a vehicle, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. Can actually back into this parking. Very unconventional, so again, a car has to pull forward on Second Street, any cars that are behind that car. Will either have to be waved around him, or the car will have to pull out of the way, then the car will again, back all the way down to these spaces. To this far spot, and back into their, their parking spot. Um, it just doesn't seem realistic to me, it, it doesn't make any sense. Um, the parking spaces here on this property, I think that it's important to have ingress and egress. Whenever possible, for every individual space. Anything could happen, this, this guy here in front could have a heart attack, the, uh, um, he may have to go to the hospital, and the car behind him will not be able to leave. Be a fire, or, who knows? West side spaces, um, lot fifteen. Again. We have the mine shaft spaces here, um, the applicant claims that these are back in spaces. You have this, um, rock wall here in this configuration, and I guess, um, what is being considered. Tonight is that these cars will pull forward on Second Street, make this sort of U-turn shape back in. And back into these spaces, all four of these spaces. Simply just doesn't seem realistic to me. Um, I actually drove to lot ten today, which is the parking lot in front of the Thai restaurant, Ubon. It was an empty lot, I drive a town truck, it's, uh, relatively small, it's not a full-size pickup truck. They actually don't even really make them that small anymore, and, um, this was an empty lot. And I found it difficult to back into these spaces, I just, I just don't, if it was a full parking lot, I don't think you could do it. Um, but never mind an empty parking lot, that I, I thought really wasn't very easy to navigate. Again, you have over here. Rock shop, they have two spaces, but I think, you know, appropriate parking will dictate that you should always be able to leave. And enter a parking space when you need to in the event of emergency, and, um, and you can't do that with one of these spaces. So I believe it should be taken off the plan. Also show over here that, um, the applicant's requesting that this space is removed. But I don't think it's fair to remove the space of free parking outside in the right-of-way in a town that has limited parking. And, um, and then request the planning commission to approve a parking on his private lot. Over here. By the, um, proposed dining and retail tent. Um, he's got a footprint here of the, the tent. And is this the actual footprint? Are there guy wires for this tent? I know this is just a proposed sort of placeholder. However, um, if these two proposals are being entertained separately, then, um, it has to be considered. And I think that the, either this placeholder should be removed, or that these five spaces over here for, um. Uh, CW, um, should be removed, you see how tight this area is here? I really think it'd be difficult to pull him forward in these spaces, never mind trying to, to back in. Again. These are boxes on a piece of paper, they, they just don't seem realistic to me. Um, and I don't think it's reasonable to, um, make this proposal without truly. Actually making a design and vetting this properly. Um, if these, this proposal is passed tonight, and then the applicant comes to you to put up this tent. Who really is responsible to ensure that these spaces comply with the original plan? And are there guy wires, is this the true footprint? I, I just don't know. And I think it should be removed from the, the plan if, if we're supposed to consider, if, either you're supposed to consider it tonight. Um, over here, in front of, uh, on the east side of Wings of Lace, in front of you, you have mine shaft parking again. In these two spaces, the far south. Currently, there's a food truck there, and the food truck is parked in a diagonal faction. And, um, what the applicant is asking tonight is to remove the food truck and make room for two other spaces. Now, I wanna point out that this space, the second space in the mine shaft, actually has a gas meter. Essentially, in the middle of this space, it's not possible to put a, a vehicle there, it's not identified on this plan. I actually had to drive there and look at it myself, and then the, um, and it's, that's really the reason why that this food truck is parked in a diagonal faction right there. Additionally, it doesn't seem like it would truly align with the comp plan and provide, um, promarks within the downtown district by taking that. Out, um, and that's really just an opinion of staff, but the point is that, um, I, this space should be removed from the plan. Over here, Wings of Lace, the maintenance building here, as you, as you probably realize now, I drove around this area to check it out. Because, um, I just, looking at it, on, on, on this, on its surface. Just doesn't seem reasonable that you can really back in all these places. Reasonably, and then is this, um, gonna be fined if you don't back in, you know, what is, what are the consequences for not backing? Um, the, these spaces here, currently there's a, well, first of all, all over the maintenance, this building, it says no parking, actively no parking, don't park here, so. Obviously, that will probably have to be removed. And then in front of here, there's a dilapidated, um, wooden, kind of rotten deck. That probably enters in at least two of these spaces here, I think that if the applicant is asking to put cars here. You should identify these things on his plan, and that he's gonna remove them. Um, to accommodate those spaces along with the signs. Not saying he should do it now, but I think it should be identified in his narrative. Um. The proposal says. That this supports the comp plan by enhancing pet safety by creating two new loading zones. Well, first of all, he says, in quote, pet safety, and identifies a page number in the comp plan. When you go to the comp plan and you look at that page number, it, he leaves an important piece out of it. It says, um, enhance pet safety. And encourage alternative transportation, uh, that's an important piece to, um. Leave out, it's really, in my mind, for lack of a better word, cherry picking the comp plan to make this plan look better than it actually is. And I don't think it's appropriate. Um, and then he says, um, he's creating two new load, loading zones. It's great, and I applaud the applicant for doing that, and I think, um, it is better, it does make for, um. Better flow of traffic by providing, uh, a loading zone for his businesses. However. Sixteen dash two oh one, the loading zones. Are to be out of the public way. So. It's in code, it's not like it's doing a favor, uh, by putting the, um, loading zone on his own property, he's actually required to do it. It's, it's not like this is, um, something that. Out of the goodness of heart, he's providing it, in a sense he is, but technically, he's really supposed to do it. And, um, in this particular instance, this applicant, um, has plenty of space and land to provide that, and therefore, it should be his obligation to do it. Now, I know the precedent has been set all over town, one only has to drive down First Street on almost any day of the week to see other businesses parked in the right-of-way. And so I realize the precedent has been set. Um, but, my point is, that I feel like the application disingenuous, and, um. And I, I don't, I don't think it should be considered tonight, so, um, I think, all those were my, um, concerns. Yeah, I think that's it, so I'm ready to, um, turn it over to, to Cynthia, or to Rick, um, to go over any other concerns, uh, staff have. So thank you very much.
Thanks Chris, Rick, you wanna go ahead?
Thanks, Chris. Rick, you wanna go ahead?
Sure. Uh, Chris, could you flip that actually back up there centered around the tent?
Sure, hold on a sec.
Sorry to make you go do that again.
No. And it's one of the advantages of COVID, if there is one. All right, here, this is the tent area.
Yep. So I did have a couple comments. For Ron Mitchell, um first one was some of the arrows don't seem to make a lot of sense on one way because they're coming out of places that don't have a way in. I did talk to him and he's gonna take a look at that and maybe take out some of those arrows. Uh, bigger concern was if you see that car there, number space number seventy-five and where the tent's showing up uh in relation to the handicap spot kind of below and to the right of seventy-five. This doesn't give us any access through that space, even for an ambulance. Um. And especially to get a larger truck in, there would be really difficult if the parking lot's full. So that's a bit of a concern. Uh, once things are a little more established, uh Ron and I can go out there and take a look and actually measure some of that distance. We just didn't get a chance to before this. Uh, concerned with the tent, I did do a little measure. This is definitely bigger than the forty by sixty that uh Ron told me this was gonna be. Um, and that as far north as that tent goes, it definitely blocks that access. Uh, kind of that whole section kind of between, you know, the Ubon parking and all the way over to that behind where Katmandu is. It's kind of been an open area for a long time. And we're certainly gonna be concerned with how that tent layout actually sits. Uh, obviously, that's not, it says proposed at this point, so we don't know for sure. Uh, but that's something we'll have to watch if that ever uh that proposal does come through at a future date. And I think that's the only issue we had on this from our access standpoint and from the fire department. So thank you.
Okay, Cynthia, do you wanna complete your?
Okay, so um I I think that's kind of uh most of the concerns there. Um, aside from the code notes that Chris had within the zoning chapter. Um, I will turn it over to the applicant unless questions of staff.
Over to the applicant and have Ron Mitchell speak. Um, Ron, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right, Ron, um, I need to ask you that this is a as you know, the public hearing is by virtual computer here that we're not, obviously not PD. Um it's gonna be a little difficult to do it, but we have been able to do it for about nine months. So do you approve us moving ahead with this public hearing for your proposal?
Yes, I do.
All right, you have.
Um, I think Chris has got some very valid concerns. Uh, I would like to uh sit down with him and go over them. Uh, there were more than I could keep up making notes for. And uh, I would like to uh uh continue the hearing until I've had a chance to work with Chris on this to his satisfaction and then represent it if uh he's willing to do that.
Chris is, are we okay with that, Chris?
Yes, yep, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um. Jennifer Matson, our attorney, um at this time, is give me some guidance, sir. Should we take uh public statements here or should we stop and continue the hearing for the applicant's request?
Well, and I want to clarify too, Jennifer, before you jump in, that we do have a lot of members of the public who did just to comment. So I would think we would want to give them that opportunity. And then also, if I recall correctly, there needs to be a continuation to a date certain, Ron, for you.
I couldn't hear the last thing you said, Miranda.
That you'd have to continue, do a continuation to a date certain. So if you wanted to come back, it would be January twenty seven.
Uh, as long as I can meet with Chris uh at length to talk about his concerns, so I'll circle.
Just and just to clarify.
Okay.
Chair Cornell, this is Jennifer Matson. Can I just clarify one point? Miranda is absolutely correct that um continuance to a date certain is preferable so that the application doesn't have to be renoticed. If it's not to a date certain, if you know, that can't be accomplished, then everything would have to be renoticed.
Okay, and I need your input because I feel that seeing how the proposal will probably possibly change drastically, that we actually gotta wait until the applicant has his final proposal before we actually have people review and get comment from the public. But please give us your opinion on as far as take the public input.
Well, you could take public comment tonight and reopen um the public comment at the next meeting.
As well. Chair Cornell, my recommendation would just maybe be for Ron, for him to hear feedback from other stakeholders outside of Chris and Rick. So that those that feedback can be incorporated into the changer.
Certainly.
So, okay. I think we should do that then. That makes sense, uh, Miranda. So, um it is a public hearing. We will open it up to the public and we'll take public comment at this time. Uh, who is there to speak, please? We actually have never had anybody, I think, before speak at the public hearing so far. So please, uh, address your board coming forward with a name and address. Is anybody there that wants to speak at this time?
Uh, yes, this is a Mike Dye. I'm a four ninety-one Spring Street. I just, I wanted to thank Chris Pelletier for uh the really insightful feedback. Um, my only comment at this time is that it really seems like this proposal, while it's been in works. And I know Ron Mitchell's been thinking about it for for years. Um, it seems like it's in a very preliminary stage. And I'd make a request to Ron that he come forward with a much more complete and detailed a proposal so that he uh doesn't use our staff times, uh our staff's time uh without due cause. Um, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the public wants to speak?
I would like to speak if I could, please.
Your name and your address.
My name is Claudia Schotler. I live at five eighty-two Morning First Circle in Gilpin County. But I'm speaking on behalf of uh Stephen Tebow uh concerning the shopping center. He called me today and asked me to uh just express his concerns about paid parking pretty much anywhere in town. That it's going to drive people over to the shopping center and take up the spots over here for indefinite amounts of time. We don't have the uh staffing to monitor and keep an eye on that. I did tell him, though, that I thought with the wayfinding proposal, I'm also on the DDA that um was approved last night by the BOT, that that would help immensely with directing people to different places in town that they don't currently aren't aware of. Um, because the wayfinding, a big part of it is going to be about parking and and directing people to those kinds of spots. But uh, like I said, I'm just representing uh Stephen Tebow tonight, and he's very concerned about paid parking in town and how it would affect the shopping center.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Uh, may I respond? Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that?
Uh, well, let's, why are you, Ron, if you take notes, let's, let's have everybody speak, and you could have two minutes to respond. To all the Is there anybody else wants to speak at this time from the public?
Yes, my name is Liz Cooley. I am daughter to Rowby, resident at one fifty East First Street. We have uh several concerns about this proposal. Number one being that we feel that Netherland continues to be a welcoming location to tourists. And we feel like if people who want to pay for parking want to visit a town, that they will go to Boulder. Our feeling is, is that parking should be free, not only for our tourist population to encourage business, especially during COVID, but also to maintain the base of our businesses, which is local traffic. We feel, especially for some businesses, especially businesses like Salto, where they don't have street parking, that if they are forced to have their customers pay for parking, that it will decrease traffic traffic to their businesses and in general discourage visiting and commerce in Netherland. We are residents on First Street. This summer, we experienced a cone zone in front of our house that we did not agree to in an effort to slow down traffic in our neighborhood. We know that if parking is required to be paid for, that we'll be dealing with another problem. So not only do people speed in our neighborhood and endanger the pedestrians who park legally down the road and walk to First Street, but also we know that we will have even more challenges to getting out of our own driveway. We want to encourage commerce in Netherland. We want to encourage visitors in Netherland, but we want to respect the residential areas in our neighborhood. We also have concerns that our police department will be engaged in writing tickets versus making sure that our visitors are safe and that our residents are comfortable with the number of people who visit our town. We hope that Ron Mitchell will find another way to make more money with the properties that he owns without charging for parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else saying from the public would like to speak at this time?
I just want to offer a reminder too, if you're on the phone and you wanted to speak, you may need to press star six to do so.
Okay, is there anybody there? Press star seven, eight, or nine, or ten. Going once is a we don't hear anybody. Uh, okay, then I will close the public hearing portion of the hearing. Um, Ron, go ahead. If you want to follow up with some of those comments, we'll certainly listen to you, sir.
And uh Chair Cornell, actually, if you're gonna continue the hearing to a date and accept comment at a later date, we we wouldn't actually be closing the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
But if you allow Mr. Mitchell an opportunity to respond, that's fine.
Okay, well, we'll respond and then we will continue. We'll let Ron respond and then we will continue the public hearing. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, um, first, uh, I have the same problem as the shopping center. There are people who park on my property and then go use the shopping center. So that works both ways. And I understand Mr. Tebow's concern. Uh, but I also have a lot of other problems that I can't really address other than charging for parking and supervising the parking. It's not a matter of making money. But I have a lot of people who just leave junk cars on the property, take off the plates, and then I have to pay for it. Uh, my tenants complained to me, but not to town, about the number of people who go bicycling, uh park their cars, are gone all day, who go skiing and they're gone all day. And that denies people who would shop at their uh places of business a place to park. So it's more a need of supervision. It's more a need of uh regulation. And uh, I would like to uh uh take this recording and I will have prepare and work with Chris Pelletier on uh providing comments and rebuttal to some of the other people. I'm not sure the name of the lady, Liz Cooley, I think. It was at one fifty-first. Uh, I noticed the uh uh cone zones that were there this summer. And uh, part of this uh parking proposal is an effort to try and get uh vehicles to utilize the commercial uh Second Street rather than uh First Street. The entrances, if you noted on that, would be all be on Second Street. And hopefully that would uh have and encourage less traffic down First Street into their residential neighborhood. One never really knows what's gonna happen. And I've talked to several traffic engineers and circuit uh planners. You don't really know what's gonna happen until you try something. And then you have to really, I think, have the ability to change it uh so that you find out what works and what doesn't. Uh, I don't want to make a long extended uh discussion because there's been a lot said here, and I would prefer to study it, take the uh the recording in this meeting and transcribe it so that I can do an adequate job of uh making fuller and a more complete presentation to the criticisms of those who very constructively offer them. Thank you.
Okay, um, uh Jennifer, um Matson, our attorney. Uh, would it be appropriate, actually, should we have the commissioners speak at this time? Or should we just wait till we hear the uh the next proposal and have continue the public hearing?
No, yes, you're you're correct in your thought there that you should wait and not provide any comment yet um regarding the application and and wait and see what um Mr. Mitchell brings back to you. I do suggest if you're going to move it to, um, is it January twenty-eighth that's the meeting? That you that you have a motion to continue to that meeting.
It's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if there's uh no other issues for staff, then I'd ask for a motion to continue the hearing for the special review special review use application for the paid parking at multiple locations between First Street and Highway one nineteen and Snyder Street uh for Ron Mitchell. Um. Would someone like to make that motion to continue to January twenty-seventh?
This is Billy. I'll make that motion.
I get a second?
This is Linda, and I second.
Okay, uh Cynthia, I'll call for the vote.
Sure. Chair Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Senator Glasser?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes, yes.
Did we get Commissioner Peril yet? No? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes to continue the paid parking application to January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, we will go on to um discussion items then. The first discussion item is uh the Transportation Improvement Project. Um, so Chris Prado, you want to take, excuse me, Chris Pelletier, do you want to take this, sir?
Yeah, I was actually, I lost my connection. I was just about to sign off and reconnect and it popped back up again, so. Um, so this is good timing. Okay, so um all right, um tip. I'll give a brief overview tonight of the project, um how it relates to the various planning documents that um exist in town. Um, I'll present some latest concept. And, um, and then a couple of them are included in your packet tonight, but I also have one that, um, has been revised since, since, uh, uh, I've submitted these materials. Um, mostly because it's just so, uh, fluid and as I get feedback, I, I continue to make changes. So, um, I've made some changes. Um, so I'll go over the OPR inputs, um, particularly what the, the planning commission had provided when we created the OPR. And then, um, answer any questions about the project. So, um, in your aim, I give a brief description of the project. Mostly you know that, um, town was awarded $1.5 million to, to create a sidewalk. We were approved to apply for this funding back in February of, um, 2019. Um, we got the, we received the funding at the end of 2019. And then it took essentially a year to, um, go through CDOT's process and procure engineers and, um, uh, fulfill the criteria to move on to, to the design stage. And, um, have received the required funding to start design. And so that's where we've been in the past, uh, two months, roughly two months or so. Um, all relates to the, um, various planning documents. So in the, in the comp plan, goals within there are to, um, improve transportation network in town, which this project does. Promote alternative transportation, development of sustainable um, retention structures, create biking and pet friendly maps, uh, promote, uh, non-motorized travel in town, promote connection with the RTD and expand RTD service. Um, the DDA master plan identifies expansion of sidewalks and, and crosswalks within their plan. Stormwater management is a goal of the DDA master plan. Improvements to the gateway and in their plan, they call this area the gateway of town. Where conversely, if you look at the, um, Prostab parks and open space plan, they actually call the gateway over by Barker. Nonetheless, um, relief vehicle congestion, um, is identified in this plan. And in turn, that encourages visitors to explore a Netherland on foot. Bury power lines is one of the priorities of the DDA's master plan. And then they identify limited parking, um, and, um, and having to, uh, improve parking in the area. But I, I'd like to point out that this, while this is actually a walking plan and a multimodal plan, it's not really a parking plan. However, I do understand that the, the two are interrelated, um, and, uh, and so there has to be a discussion of both. Um, so the Parks and Open Space Master Plan promotes biking and walking, better connectivity through town and operation with the DDA on, on wayfind, wayfinding signage. And this actually happens to be a shared, um, goal of Prostab and SAB and the DDA, um, in which they can collaborate on signage. And actually just last night at the, the BOT meeting, um, there are a lot of great points brought up about signs in town. And, um, this project will actually help fund some of that signage and particularly, and I'll show you in, in my um, concept here in a minute. Area for what was called the gateway sign. Um, also in the 2017 roads assessment plan, um, Jefferson Street was identified as needing improvement, which, uh, is probably clearly obvious to, to everybody in this, in this room. Um, other great things, um, ADA accessibility. Um, that's just an overarching goal of, of town and town staff when, when planning planning things is to improve ADA access, which this, um, this project does. Um, and then it scored well in the sustainability scorecard, which is, um, located in the, in the OPR, which I think is included in the package tonight. Um, so with that, I'll, um, I'll, I'll move on to the, uh, the concepts and I'll go through um, one at a time. So I'm going to share my screen, hopefully successfully. Okay.
It's working.
Perfect. Thank you. So, um, like I said at the beginning, the, um, there's three versions in your packet tonight. Two of them are exactly the ones that I'm going to be walking through with you tonight. But then the, the third one, which I'll present at the, towards the end, is actually an updated version that has taken into account comments from property owners and, and business owners in town. Um, and based on their feedback, we made some changes. So I'm going to start here with this one. This is exhibit one. I think all you guys have this in your, your packet. Um, and I'll, I'll go over here. This was something that the, uh, Prostab had, uh, requested for better pedestrian travel is a frontage zone. You see the, the sidewalk is delineated. It's a request in the OPR. And, um, this is an example of a delineated sidewalk with different zones within it. And obviously Netherland doesn't have this huge expand space to put trees and so forth. But, um, as an example though, there's what's called a frontage zone. It's directly in front of the, the business. And in this particular picture, it shows a table and chairs. And, and again, um, we won't be making one that big, but, uh, we will have one large enough for a sandwich board or, or a pedestrian to stand while other traffic walks by. And so, um, staff identified a frontage zone along Jefferson Street. So you see here, the, um, the expanded sidewalk and you could barely see the front zone because it's behind this bold line, but it is there. The sidewalks themselves are eight feet as identified in this, um, spec down here. Now I want to point out that every version that you're going to see tonight is a one-way traffic down, um, North Jefferson Street. Um, I also point out that in the town's code, that is, um, section on 1166, um, town adopted state highway access code. And, um, and it identified a minimum street width for two-way traffic, which is 25 feet. The current width here does not meet that minimum width required for two-way traffic. I think many of us have experienced this, at least I have, um, on this street. Cause I probably go to liquor store too much, but the, the, um, having two-way traffic and then trying to, uh, park can be challenging and sometimes, sometimes just drive by because it's just too congested and not enough room. So hopefully the goal of, of improving flow of traffic through this area will actually make it more inviting and easier to use. So again, every version that you're going to see here, it's going to show one-way traffic on North Jefferson. Um, so we come down here, I'm going to head over to the east. The sidewalk, um, depiction that you see here in front of you is similar to what already exists right now. There's, um, expanded width of the sidewalk. Um, important to note that there's a bold black line here that identifies the, the property line in the town's right-of-way. Currently, which is not realized until we had the survey, the sidewalk actually goes on to the town's property and then again onto, um, Net's property. And then back out again, uh, when he crosses the street into West First. And then the sidewalks kind of butt up against the property line. Sidewalks, the parking space, uh, there. In this area here, so, um, you see there's a reduction in spaces. Currently there's 12 spaces there. One of them is, is a staff parking space for pickup and delivery and UPS and so forth. Um, and then there's eight regular spaces here. This area is sort of funky triangle, um, where the, the garden exists now. The flower bed, I guess, um, is identified for a rain garden, which is a type of, um, stormwater retention area that uses, um, surface drainage to feed into a flower or, uh, uh, an area to grow things and, and create a green, a green zone. This was one of the, um, criteria that, uh, SAP had asked that we integrate into the plan. And it's a way to help mitigate some of the storm drainage. So, yeah, it's identified right there. Then you move down to the south, um, the sidewalk gets a little bit smaller. This one is, um, we are going to relocate the existing electric charger down into this area of the parking lot and then add a, a high-speed charging station that, um, Netherland received funding for um, down here. And also important to note that Netherland did receive funding for the infrastructure for the high-speed charger, um, because it requires, uh, space power. And we've been approved for, um, 100% of that funding as well. Also, um, in every version of these, uh, plans that you're going to see tonight is, um, the power lines are, are buried. And they start from the, um, the corner of the highway over here. There's a pole and it's got, uh, a, a lot of different wires on it. And it will continue all the way down the street to corner of Jackson. Then, um, we are also proposing to bury the power line from roughly a pole in front of the, uh, business connection on the west side of Nets. And when I say buried our lines, um, these on the pole, you'll notice are T-shaped. You have the, the high voltage primary power at the very top of the T. And then at the cross, you have secondary power, which is a variety of wires there. Then you have, um, uh, communication wires down the, the T. And, um, and I think there's a couple of versions of those. There's, uh, just regular service lines and there's also some, uh, fiber optic lines. Or a few lines. Then the, um, project continues. You see the sidewalk here. There is not a frontage zone in this area. It's an eight-foot sidewalk. And he's west. There's a, um, crosswalk here at Jackson. And at the edge of the pavement, we continue developing the sidewalk. Then it heads to north. This area here has been identified for wayfinding, uh, a tiosk. This is what I was mentioning as, um, shared interest among boards. Um, and I've connected representatives from Prostab and SAP and, um, DDA, um, to collaborate on size, what they want there. I know, um, Prostab would like to see, for example, a trails map. And maybe the DDA would like to see some, you know, map of businesses, uh, whatever it is. Information. The, um, there's going to be bike parking identified right here. And then it enters the, um, the RTD parking lot. Let me pull up another figure. Again, this doesn't change. And this is a, a, a work in progress. I have a meeting with RTD tomorrow. So, um, I'll learn more about, uh, what they, what they have and, um, when I have a discussion with them, but you see, uh, the, it crosses this drive area here. There's an island that exists that may possibly have to be expanded. And the path will continue through the north for us. And there's a sort of a vegetated area with a couple of trees here. And then the sidewalk will be developed, continued to the west and, um, join up with the terminal. Make it a nice, clean, safe, multimodal ADA accessible connection from here to roughly New Moon Bakery. Um, so this was the first version. And I might point out here that, um, you see the flow of traffic, how it, it, it comes in here, then it jogs back to the south and heads over here. This is a raised, um, sidewalk, which will help provide traffic calming. And then it crosses that. And then the, the traffic again must jog up to the, um, north a bit and continue. In this version, you see it's one-way traffic on West First Street. This is conceptual. We have identified, um, parking on the, uh, south side of West First Street. And this is only a placeholder just to show that the possibility exists to develop parking here relatively inexpensively, because I know that's a, um, a desire of of multiple boards really is to have more parking, as was evidenced in the, the first presentation for parking, um, further down First Street. See, there's 21 spaces. There's, it's not realistic because there's a driveway here and, and in, in reality, it's probably closer to 17. Um, however, uh, we just wanted to place it out there to say, hey, um, if the DDA or if the planning commission wanted to recommend, make a recommendation that they would like to develop these spaces. Kind of see what it looks like. But, um, they are not part of the project. This is really a sidewalk project. But the possibility exists. So, um, now I'm going to move over to, um, so you see, I, I also want to point out, and, um, a couple of weeks ago, and, and trusty Taylor to speak to this and Cynthia, I guess that, um, at the BOT meeting, there is a discussion that ensued about, uh, a refutable, um, encroachment permit, which is something that the town requires from property owners in recognition um, that when the property is encroaching within the town's right-of-way, we ask them to acknowledge that they are in the town's right-of-way and assign something that says, hey, you know, you're on town property and, and the town has the right to take this land back. Now, I don't think that's ever happened before, um, but it is something the town does. And so, um, one of the reasons why I thought that this plan, um, wasn't ideal was just that conversation. And, you know, I make that point in the previous, uh, presentation from, um, the applicant who wanted the, the parking proposal was to respect each other's parking or rather, um, property lines. And here you'd see, we're not really doing that. Here, we're actually asking this property owner to allow us to, to use this, this area. So I thought that was uncomfortable in that, um, and be even more uncomfortable in the future if the property owner has to have it back after the development already happened. Um, and so that is why we came up with this second version, really exhibit three. You see here. Uh, actually, let me just show you an image. The other downside of having that, um, parking here is what you see here right now. We've all seen it. Um, we can't fit our sidewalk back here. Um, the cars nudge, uh, right up against the curb naturally. And, um, they even, you know, push on the signs a bit. And then you see the pedestrians, there's not a really clear separation of pedestrian travel and vehicle travel. And that's really the point of this project is to have a nice, clear separation of safe travel of pedestrians that come to Netherland to walk and explore town. And go back to version three. So for that reason, we came up with this, which, um, keeps the, the sidewalk entirely in the town's right-of-way, except for where it's on the, um, town's property in front of town hall. Still maintain the delivery zone here. And, um, and as you can see what it does. And I'll just remind everybody, everything else stays the same. The only change here is this sidewalk placement. The, um, sidewalk has a nice linear flow to. The um sidewalk has a nice linear flow to it, nice line of sight. The the flow of traffic again is very linear um and smooth with uh traffic calming. Um, race cross crosswalk. The rain garden has been moved down to this lower area, which is actually more appropriate because um the drainage from. West First Street really kind of rolls down here uh towards the the south side of West First Street and then some of the drain from. From uh Jefferson comes over to here. It can enter the rain garden in some configuration. Overflow into this box over here, which has been identified for snow removal. And um and stormwater retention quality. Um, something more than just a place to put snow, but for water permeate. And um there's aversions in the town's master infrastructure plan that'll help guide. The design for what this looks like. So I don't actually have a design for it yet, but actually a place for water to permeate. Um, so in all honesty, I I really like this plan and I propose it to the DDA and and um. For all the reasons I've just mentioned, it's nice vehicle separation and the the sort of linear nature of it. And where the rain garden is and all that. But obviously, the the downside of this is that it eliminates twelve spaces or well, actually eleven spaces. Um, and it's been clear, it's been made clear to me that um that it's simply not desirable. The other thing is that um in presenting this to the DDA. Well, they also like this plan. Um, they really like all of them, honestly, that um. They really want to lean on what the property owner and the business owner's input is. For for, you know, what happens in front of their business. You know, essentially, originally, I thought, well, we can give them back their lands. They could. The town could even have, within this project, help develop a like another fronted zone and put tables or whatever. Um, however, uh they don't want it. It's not a usable space for them. They don't want to lose parking. Um, and um and that's understandable and it's uh. So. And became clear that uh no one really likes it. The other thing here. After communicating with the stakeholders, that this sort of pinch zone in on um North Jefferson. It's really prohibitive for delivery trucks. Um, these extended, these curb extensions. Um, were identified as an area for pedestrians and and ProSAB had. Mentioned that in the OPR that they would like to incorporate curb extensions. Just as they are over here on West First Street or rather on the corner of the highway and. And First Street where multiple pedestrians can kind of hang out without being in the road. That was the point of these curb extensions here on um Jefferson, but they're not practical. And it is realized. Again, uh West First Street, we're just kind of showing the the spaces here um and the potential to add more spaces. Then you can see there's also parallel parking here as basically as it exists right now. Uh, so that's that plan. Um, and I think more or less it's. Essentially dead on arrival. The um, the other thing that's good about this is that the one-way traffic. Sort of offers this no-man zone here and is a little bit more room for large delivery trucks. Because there are big eighteen-wheelers here. They could pull in here, park off to the side, and cars can drive around them or. They are able to take up quite a bit of the road, park in, you know, back into Neds um or I think. They may even access this alley, you know, but it does seem kind of tight, but it's gonna be my my job to. To monitor truck traffic in the area so I can better understand it. And then the engineers. Have a program called Auto Turn where they'll run trucks through this intersection to hear that they can navigate it. So based on feedback and these two plans, we came up with a third version that's not in your packets. I'm gonna pull this up. Um, I think in your packet, um you've got some feedback from Nets. You also got the business owner here. You also got some feedback from the property owner. Um, and his desire to maintain um the sidewalk on his property. So there's a general. Understanding that they're okay with having the sidewalk there. I think there'll need to be something more formal than an email um established. But um nonetheless, uh it seems like there's. Census that they mark the sidewalk on their property. Now, it it's important because in the letter. The property owner has requested something in return to put the sidewalks there. So this discussion is completely moot unless the planning commission makes a recommendation to the BOT to accept the terms. That um this property owner has requested and and y'all have it. You've all read it, I I assume. But uh he said there's no problem with having the sidewalk on his property forever, he states. However. In the event of redevelopment, I want, I would want the square footage to be included in any calculations for maximum lot coverage with a new building. So in any of these versions, um those conditions must be accepted. If um if we're gonna move forward with this design. So I just wanted to point that out at the end of our discussion tonight after um we get feedback and. Make a determination here, um that will need to be considered. So in this version, um there's been four spaces reclaimed. There's um a space here for deliveries as town uses right now and UPS and and um drop-offs for town staff. There, you can see lightly where the old spaces were, so. The there's not much room left. It does open up a little bit more. Um, but. What's um good about this version is that I think it does create slightly better um separation to vehicles and. In cars, as I I showed you in that image earlier. There's less apt to for a car to um bump their bumper a couple of feet into the sidewalk. Um, you notice here that the the curb extensions have been shortened. And that um we've increased the width here to nearly forty feet to accommodate large vehicles. Uh, so that they can make these turns. And um again, we'll go through the auto turn simulator and make sure that it's realistic. Um, but larger trucks will, in this version, will be able to make their deliveries. Come out onto West First Street, easily make this turn. And head on out. In this version, you see, really is as it is today. It's two-way traffic. There's some disjointed parallel parking over here. There's some perpendicular parking in front of Mary Ann's place. Century twenty-one and um. And it it is what it is. So if there's um a desire to develop this. And um I did propose this to the DDA and the DDA would like time to consider. Something that they want to invest in. Um, then the previous versions would apply right here. And I do want to point out, in those previous versions, I'm just gonna quickly click on it. Don't want to get too confusing, but. That you notice the town's right-of-way is here and the town is not looking to claim any more land. Um, than it needs to. And the trees and that exists here, the planters, everything stays. And um the only spaces that would be affected are essentially what's already in the road. So there's no real change here other than. Really developing the spaces and striping them appropriately, but there's no um reclamation of town land. Um, so because we've moved the curb extensions, um relocate the fire hydrant here. Uh, this walkway doesn't line up with the electric chargers, but that's not a problem. The um way sidewalk is here, but it is pinched a bit. In this version. Ideally, this would all be one-way. As this traffic flowing east would not really be able to navigate this. This can change. This can slide down to the to the south. Um, rain garden is here, which again is an ideal location. And it hasn't been determined what's gonna grow there, whether it's trees or flowers. Um, and I think that's essentially. The main difference between all the the versions that I've presented tonight. In this, there's a nice um. Flow of traffic, a better flow of traffic. Um, that again is more linear. And not so so wonky of going north and south and north and south. The other thing that was pointed out in. In an SAP meeting is having uh. Spaces for larger trucks. So in this version, you can take advantage of a little bit of extra space. In the visitor center parking lot by increasing the length of these spots where you could actually have uh large truck parking. I'll also point out that in my discussions with the property owner. Or rather, the business owner here at Nets, that one of the things that would help with parking here in town. In this area is that town staff currently uses four spaces in this lot for their purposes um at Town Hall. And that um moving them. Requiring those uh folks to park in a separate lot. Um, up the street at the Presbyterian Church, which is not on this map, like it showed to you. But the uh would help businesses um reclaim more spaces in this area. Another four spaces, ultimately only really reducing parking in this area by four spaces. Um, if that was decided again. That would really need to be a recommendation um by the planning commission to maybe town staff. Or. Do an appropriate authority to request town to park in a different location. Um, that would help with this proposal. I think uh. I think with that. I'll take any questions um regarding this proposal and um. And I I and that's it. I think I'm done. So if you have any questions, please feel free to to ask them.
Really? Okay, well, I guess quickly do that with the planning commission, but then I want to get. Public input to uh Chris at some point. So uh. So quickly, any planning commissioners have questions of uh Chris for his presentation?
I have a couple of questions. This is Karen Mark.
Okay.
Um. Uh, so the the proposal, um the third proposal would have. Four less parking spaces than are currently available in the area that's being reevaluated.
Yes, overall, a total of twelve less space, eleven, I'm sorry, eleven less spaces in this third um exhibit.
Does that include the parking on West First Street?
No. If um parking was developed in West First Street, there would be a net gain. And you see over here, and I mentioned in my presentation, and in these little triangles. Um, it counts the spaces. There's twenty-one spaces here. Um, however, there is a driveway entrance here for Net or Net. Um, there might be a driveway necessary for Century Twenty-One. I think they want to access both sides of their building. Um, other than that, I don't believe there's any um other driveways impacted here. But I will point out that this, the resident in this house parks on the street and um. So, you know, maybe dedicating a spot for this resident would be appropriate.
Okay, um. Uh, uh, we received an email from the business owners at Net, Nets, and. They're under the impression that um property owners would need to pay for undergrounding utilities. Um, is that the case?
No. So um after, I have met with the um the business owner since. Um, since that letter was sent um to help um clarify some some of the misunderstandings. So. Over here, you'll see that um I had proposed uh burying the the power line here on the west side of Nets, but. Actually, Net Power is overhead from this pole to to their properties. They won't be affected by that. I want, I can't say they won't be affected by construction. Can't, I don't know what. What is entailed in burying power lines um if power is out for a period of time. I don't know any of that yet. But as far as paying for running their services, that that's not gonna be. Now, over here. You bring up a good point because there are power poles that have multiple overhead lines to to these buildings. And what we are proposing here. Because it's not practical and not covered within project funding to put the the um services underground. And bring them to the properties. Um, mostly because it's likely that the the their panels within their buildings themselves would need to be upgraded in order to accommodate. A different way to connect the power. And a lot of these buildings are old. Um, this one over here, I, there's a lot of cabin, I believe. So um the way to alleviate that is to set a pole. On this side within the right-of-way that would intercept the overhead lines. And we turn them back to their properties just as they are today. And there would need to be two poles. There'd be one over here. And one over here that would be able to accommodate these businesses um overhead line. No cost to them.
Okay, that makes sense. I was just, I didn't think they would have to pay, but I just wanted to make sure on that. Um, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
This is Billy. I just have one question. Um, although this looks good and it's good to see kind of the different options. Hopefully you can go as many lines as you can afford because that would be kind of nice. Um, but I wonder. Like on the last plan you showed where you got the four. Parallel parking spots on the north side of the um of First. Um, you know, in front of Ned's there and and the town hall. Um, and then I I wonder if you consider with that, which I think is a good way to go. And and I like that you widen the um kind of the uh turn there onto Jefferson. But I wondered like i- if you go farther west on west or farther west on first, if all those parallel um could be. Um, diagonal instead to kind of increase the parking. And yeah, and we pinch the road. I'm just wondering if parallel to the east and 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 the diagonal to the west might help with the parking. Um, spot, the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, so um I I think, you know, what they're asked uh the board tonight. Is to um formally make your recommendation. Now, again, this is not part of the project, part of the project funding. It doesn't mean that there might not be funding available within. Um, the town's um road, road funding in public works because there probably is some. And then um. The DDA has funding. Um, but I think uh there are three things that uh would need the planning commission to formally. Recommend. One is that they um recommended to the BOT to accept um KG's conditions. To have the sidewalk on his property. Um, that's necessary for this project in this version, depending forward. The um second thing that I'd recommend is that the PC or planning commission. formally recommend uh, to, to either town staff or, or the town board to move um, their town parking spaces to a, a lot um, outside of this area to encourage more parking for visitors. And then the third thing, to your point, Billy, is that I think the PC would need to formally make a letter of recommendation to the DDA and maybe the BOT just acknowledging that they um, uh, like this plan essentially, that they would recommend um, the DDA as they're considering and thinking about their, how they want to use their funding um, to develop this area of town and, and uh, and, and add parking there. And it's about all you can do. Um. It's really about all I can do. It's not my decision. It's not even really entirely the DDA's decision, although they do have funding. Um, it would really come down to the BOT saying, yep, this is what we decided based on public input and board input. And we formally want to move forward with developing towns right of way in this areas. Um, those would be my three recommendations to them.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, is any, any other comments from planning commission questions? Okay, if not, uh, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak to the presentation?
Yeah, this is Peter. I'm Monique.
Name and address.
Yep, uh, the business at West First Street.
Couldn't quite understand you there, Peter.
Hey, Peter, if you have issues with uh, with connected, most of us do. We're turning off our video so that we can, um, that it doesn't break up the, the feed as much, just to.
But I'm so pretty. Okay.
Me too. You made me do it as well. Thanks.
I, I, I don't comment on that. Um, okay, can you understand me better now, everybody?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Okay, at first, I really want to thank that you actually applied for this grant because uh, getting one and a half million for that area, that's, that's pretty great, even though of course, the timing is like the worst ever. Uh, construction starts in summer after uh, the canyon construction and then COVID. But I guess that's what we have to do uh, to get a long-term improvement for our community out of that. So thank you all for that, whoever was involved. Um. Like you said before, Chris, that last one was not in the package. And that looks for me like a good compromise. Of course, Monique and I and our employees are concerned about losing parking in front of the business. Uh, because we lost already so many. Uh, we own the business now since twelve years. And the parking was, uh, went smaller and smaller and smaller by first adding more wheelchair accessible parking than the charging stations and then the town employees. Um, so I definitely agree with Nets. I had this here on my list. If there's a way that the employee parking for the Town Hall could be moved to their church parking lot, this is where our employees park also. Um, I think that would be a great help. And I walked with several times myself and it's, it's under one minute. So hopefully that's okay, especially if you have a little delivery zone in front of Town Hall where employers could short-term park to get documents in and out and for the other town employees like your team, Chris, that they can park there because that's really needed, I think. Um, on the west, uh, on the west part of First Street, I really like the diagonal parking concept with the one-way. I think that will gain a lot. I, I know it's not part of the project, but I think it would be goo- be good to, to really drive this forward. Um, because it's really kind of a waste right now. Maybe there is, maybe there is like four or five cars that I see parked there and not more, and it's very unorganized. So I think that would be great. Um, I have a question or input for the traffic signage. Uh, I hope that there is something in there for really showing that it's a one-way. Uh, especially on top of the road. I know that there's concerns about snow plowing and that the signs getting lost, but I think that's really the only good way to show um, motorists which direction to go there to, to prevent these traffic jams that we have in the summer. Um, the other thing is, is if there is any preparation for the festivals, because when we have a festival there, um, some infrastructure that we should think about, uh, that we could provide that could be part of that. Um. Um, the charging station. So what I'm not clear, but what I wasn't clear, uh, what I was not clear about was the charging station. So we're going to remove the old one and put it into a different location. And then there will be a new faster charging one. So does that mean we will have more charging spots? Instead of two right now, will it be three or four?
It'll be four. It'll be four.
Okay.
The existing one will be moved.
Mm-hmm.
And then a, a high-speed one will be added.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, so we lose in total even a little bit more than I thought. Okay. Um, but like I said, I think for the future, that's the right way to go. Um, maintain to visitor, blah, 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 how about that? Oh, is there a plan for having parking for Town Hall visitors? Like in, in most towns, you have at least a few spots for visitors. I don't like to give parking away. On the other side, I think it's important that uh, if we have visitors to Town Hall that need a permit or something, they should have a, a space to park. Yeah, I shouldn't say that as a business owner, but I think it's important for our town. Um, what's that timing, blah, 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 sure, blah, 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 blah. Yeah. The other thing is uh, the construction itself. I'm really happy to hear, Chris, that you talked to uh, the owners of Nets. Um, I wasn't aware of all these changes in general. I just heard from my landlord that the sidewalk is going to be wider and what that means for our patio. Um, I hope that this is going to be, that, that you take some time to plan this really well. This will have a very negative impact on our business, which we can barely, I, I don't know if we can actually make it till May. We'll see. Um, th- this is of course terrible timing, which is nobody's fault. Um, but I hope that we can make up for it with really good communication and shorten the interruptions um, for the business because we really need the summer not to recover, but to partially recover. We will not be able, even with our best year, to recover from COVID. Um, and I think, let me see, let me go through my list real quick. Yep, I think this is it. So I'm definitely for the version with the four parallel spots. Uh, I would definitely go for the diagonal planning on West Street to increase the parking in general. Because I think it's not right to ask private business owners like Ron Mitchell to provide free parking all over their place, which is not very organized now, but it's there. And right now, nobody cares on how people are parked because we don't have to, to pay for it. But this doesn't feel right to me. Like you said, Chris, it doesn't feel right to encroach on the property of uh, the business, uh, of the owner of the Nets building. I think it's also not right to expect from a private business owner that we can just all park there. And because it was always the case, that doesn't make it right. Um, and that's it. I hope we communicate about the progress and about the timing. I think that's the most important part to make this work. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Those are, are great comments. And um, I'm certainly empathetic of, of businesses in town and I understand, you know, the difficult times. Um, there, and I've discussed with Nets that there's probably a way that we can um, phase construction appropriately to help reduce the impact as much as possible. Uh, I'm not really clear on what that is. I'm working with Excel. They may be able to bore their lines under the sidewalk, at least in this section of the um, of the project, but then have to do an open cut type of situation on, on West First Street. But um, there is construction and it will be impactful. And, and I'd be lying if I said it didn't um, impact you as far as um, but uh, again, communication's key. And, and that's, that's why I'm communicating with you tonight. And then I'll be presenting these plans as they evolve um, throughout January and um, February, going to the BOT at one meeting in January, probably again in February. This is also on the town website and I'll put these plans, update them regularly on the town's website. Um, and then the signage plan, there is a um, part of the project is the creative signage plan, but that will be in collaboration with the DDA. So that's wayfinding is really good timing. Um, one of the things that Nets said, they said a lot of the same things you're saying. Um, but um, having good signage is important. And that was actually a discussion at the BOT last night about the need for signage. And I mean, it's clear that there is a need. Um, just, just something that says, hey, there's food this way or, or there's parking this way. Yeah, it's important to guide visitors who have never been here before. Um, so, and then Town Hall visitor parking, great idea. Yeah, I think that's um, that's appropriate. And then the other thing is that that parking configuration, the layout of it can change somewhat. You may be able to add another space in the, the layout, striking layout of the visitor center parking lot, if it's any consolation. And then finally, I know it seems like we're losing spaces with EV parking. But in a sense, you could be gaining customers. Um, because electrical vehicles are a thing of the future and um, trustee Taylor will, will speak to that um, here tonight. But the, really, there's going to be more and more of these EV cars. And, and this will be one area of the Peak to Peak Highway. Um, where uh, there'll be a good stop point for those people with those cars to be able to stop because there's really no other place um, in this region where cars can uh, plug in. So. So um, thank you for your.
Hey, Chris, could I offer a comment?
Sure.
This is Cynthia. I'm actually surprised I'm going to say this. So uh, I probably walk more than anyone at the Town Hall. And I've parked up at the community center and I've parked at the Presby a lot, a lot. Um, but I do want to say you're singling out one specific town staff area and making them park several streets over when every other town staff parks right in front of their buildings. In fact, you guys have parking all around the public workshop, but you guys park all like right by your entrances. You are kind of singling us out and kicking us out of the lot um, where we use. And it's not really as big of a deal to me, honestly, but I just want to point that out to you. That as much as everyone's like, yeah, you guys walk over there, um, that we are the only ones. So you know, you've had several buildings built in the town for you guys and we're still hanging with the old Town Hall and now you're kicking us out of the lot. I just want to point that out. Thanks.
Um, I, I recognize that. And I, I know I'm not going to be popular for suggesting that. And, and I have in the past, actually. Um, so, but we'll see how it goes. You're right. Some people won't like it. Um, when I drive to town, I park in the Presby Church.
All right. Hey, we're trying to get public input. Let's not get back into our employees arguing about how that's something that can be taken up in the uh, employees committee meetings, okay? So can we get more public input? Is there anybody from the public wants to speak to this? I'm sorry to off, but it just seemed like we, you know, we, we were actually in the middle of trying to get public input.
I was done, Roger.
If there's no, if there's no other public input, then we'll bring it back to uh, staff and to the um, PC. Um. After all the uh, formal presentation here is uh, so I got there was three things that we might recommend that that the diagonal parking on West First Street, that the property owner, um, I guess it's the Nets' property owner, that they would make, we would get an agreement to uh, have the sidewalk on their property, but they would not lose any square footage of their property. And the controversial one, which would be town staff parking over it uh, off the main parking lot. Um, is there any other comments from the planning commission members? Anything you want to add to this proposal? If not, is everybody in agreement of the, of the, that we would recommend to the Board of Trustees? The uh, West First Street.
Question, Roger, this is Billy. My only question is, can we, can for sake of the, on the Ned property owner, the Nets' property owner? Um, the one thing that was brought up was just future property owners of that property. Like, would the agreement we make with that, that um, you know, with the today's Nets' property owner be something that could be, you know, legally counted on into the future when it's someone, if someone else were to buy it and um, you know, want to change the, change their part of the agreement?
Right. No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I guess my thought was that, yes, this would actually have to go with the property because you, because you're talking uh, utilities and you're talking sidewalks. So it's would have to, you know, go with the property, not with the business. So it would be part of the property agreement.
Yeah, I guess that's what I mean to say is property is that, is that the property owner, could they just kind of ensure that a future property owner isn't going to kind of make a new hassle for the town that we don't see.
Okay, no, and so I think that's what it would be, that the sidewalk would stay there. So those three points, we'll make that recommendation. Um.
I have a question on, um, this is Linda. Having the town staff park at a different location, is that something really the planning commission would recommend? Or shouldn't that be staff and uh, public works talking that one over, not the planning commission recommending?
How about we make it part of, we recommend that the issue be resolved by staff? I understand what you're saying. But as part of that presentation Chris is giving us, that uh, there, there's a need. Now, there's possibly four spaces there. Um, what do you think, Steve?
Well, um, yeah, I think that it's probably not a bad idea to put that in and then the Board of Trustees can, can also chime in.
Right. And, and in the end, it's going to come up to the, to the staff and the Board of Trustees have to work this out. We can just say that we recommend at this point, four additional spaces. Okay. Well, I, you know, we don't really need to make a formal motion, but I'll just make the motion that after seeing the presentation that we would recommend that a Board of Trustees and to the DDA that we like the proposal for the diagonal parking on West First Street. That the town should reach an agreement with the property owner, that the sidewalk uh, agreement that the sidewalk could be on their property, that they would keep their square footage. And it would actually be, go with the property. And that the staff and the Board of Trustees would work out an agreement for the town staff parking on the main parking lot there in town, Town Square. Does that sound good? How about a second?
I'll second.
Do we, anybody else want to speak more to this issue?
Who is, who is that who's?
That was Steve.
That was Steve, I'm sorry.
Okay, you made the motion, Chair?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll just, Cynthia, why don't we just take a vote? We, we have to do a roll call vote, see any way we can do it.
Okay, are, are we uh, are we moving this to an action item?
No, no, you're a good point. You're right. Well, it was just that the presentation was wanted us to recommend something to them. So uh, is Jennifer still there? How we do? We just say during the discussion? is Jennifer still there? How we do, we just say during the discussion that those were the three items that the commission agreed upon during our discussion.
Uh, yes, I'm still here. You could just um, you could, you could do it not as a motion, but just as kind of a thumbs up. Like, you know how you do a nod of four?
All right, so it, so we just do a nod of four. So is there anybody that wants to nod in a negative sense? If so, speak now. Okay, so we will, we would just say that we, it was the consensus that we had a nod of four to go with those three proposals to uh the recommendations that a Board of Trustees. Thank you. Should we uh, should we take a short break, five minutes? Okay, five minute break and we'll be right back in five minutes, okay, to do the uh, the marijuana and then we we have, well, we have, we still have Town Report Marijuana and Chapter Seventeen subdivision, so we got to get this done. Okay, five minutes.
Marijuana on the break.
All right, we got them.
Thank you.
Miranda or Cynthia, are you there?
Yep, I'm here, Miranda.
Here.
Uh, Cynthia, I'm here.
For the, for the marijuana, what, what exactly we want to do? We were just, we want to go over this whole thing or did we want to form the committee?
Our recommendation is to form the committee and so trustee Taylor is going to give us a brief overview of why this is coming before the planning commission, but my, my recommendation was to do the subcommittee and then kind of see like we did the subdivision.
Okay, yeah, that's what I got from that, that we don't, we don't need to spend hours and trying to break this all down at this time.
Yep, agreed.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it wasn't quite clear.
Is everybody, is everybody back yet? Is Julian Taylor, are you there?
Billy, I'm here.
You're always there.
I, I, I'm always here in spirit.
In spirit, yeah, that's, that's scary sometimes, Julian, but yeah, I know what you do. Um, is everybody, if uh, everybody's here, let's just get, go ahead and proceed. Uh, is that what you want, Miranda, that we just have Julian introduce this, what, what the proposal is?
Yep, and then at the end, just a discussion of maybe the two to three planning commissioners who will join Julian in tackling the zoning.
Okay, uh, Julian, take it away.
So I've just discovered I'm part of another committee. I didn't realize that uh at at first, but it's okay, Miranda, I'll forgive you for that. Um, so the Board of Trustees has decided that in order to deal with retail marijuana, whether for medical or for entertainment purposes, we're going to limit the number of physical buildings that may be involved in that, in those activities within the town of Netherlands to four. So as far as retail marijuana and medical marijuana, we've said this is, this is fantastic, it's very cool, but we're going to have four retail establishments within the town and those can move, those can be relicensed, but only four physical establishments for managing retail marijuana. The issue of marijuana manufacturing, uh, production, cultivation, testing, that sort of thing, we would like to leave that to a zoning issue. And our hope is that uh through zoning, we simply assure that we don't end up with manufacturing facilities encroaching on other retail establishments. Uh, we don't want uh manufacturing facilities, cultivation facilities, taking up space in the shopping center, that sort of thing. Um, and so what the BOT decided to do was refer this problem back to you folks, the planning commission. And you may find that our current zoning laws are entirely adequate to assure our goals. But if you feel that modifications to zoning would help to assure that manufacturing and uh testing and cultivation facilities are, for example, better spaced from uh neighborhoods or better spaced away from uh uh children, uh facilities that would would be managing children, then we would welcome your recommendations along these lines. And so this is a case of not, the BOT has decided there's some horrible problem. It's just the BOT would like the planning commission to review our current zoning regulations regarding manufacturing, uh cultivation and testing of marijuana and help us feel comfortable that these zoning rules are adequate to assure that these facilities are in appropriate places within the town. And that is my entire pitch.
Anything, uh, staff, anything else to add to that, staff, or is that what, what we have?
That's kind of what we have. And so our ask tonight is to, and to identify at least two commissioners to work with trustee Taylor and myself. Um, I just, I'm taking a look at these zones where currently uh product manufacturing, cultivation and testing is allowed and just determine if that's still appropriate or if there's to be other recommendations.
All right, um, well, it it's certainly an interesting one. I know uh, actually having followed it through the years, but very originally, I do do remember it when the uh legal marijuana came out, the question of the cultivation fa- facilities, uh it, it certainly was uh, it was an issue that was discussed, I don't know if it was actually resolved. So I think to actually go back and see which districts, what areas, uh, and to to clarify this would actually be a good project. So um is I I'll just say, is there any other comment to the, to the planning commissioner, maybe a comments, questions to Julie at this time? And if you are interested in working on this committee, um, I think two to three, I mean, once we have two people on it, two commissioners that we should with Julian, then that would actually be a meeting. So you'd, we'd have to do that process. So even two to three people would be good if anybody wants to volunteer for it. So any questions at this time and or if you want to volunteer to work with uh Julian for this project, that would be entertaining to speak now, I guess. Anybody interested?
Julian, this is Jim Reese. I had a question for Julian, this is Jim Reese.
Is this Yes.
A time limited proposal at all, five years, 10 years, or is this forever?
We, we're not My hope would be that the commission would come together, review the zoning and come up with a proposal by the first quarter of next year.
I'm sorry, let me clarify. Would the, the new zoning be forever going forward? So this would be 50 years from now, we would still be bound by this uh, this code, or is this something that would be based on conditions and could be looked at again at different times in the future based on uh current conditions?
I think the second law of thermodynamics would say that this could not be forever. Uh, however, uh, I would certainly expect that the zoning we would establish would be as permanent as any zoning. As soon as zoning starts to look like it's interfering with the proper action, uh, the, the proper operation of town, we revisit zoning. But this would certainly not be any spiritual, limited, limited run zoning decision. This would be a zoning decision like any other zoning decision. Uh, for the foreseeable future, this is the zoning decision we've made. And as soon as this starts to look impractical, we will, we review it.
Uh, Jill, Steve, a quick question. Do you envision that um after the, the small little group uh comes up with a proposal, it would then come back to the planning commission first?
Well, I was, I was certainly in that, and it would come back to the planning commission, certainly before or after the BOT, yes.
Yeah, I thought it might. I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely. This would be a planning commission, uh, subcommittee that would report to the planning commission and the planning commission would decide what to send to the BOT.
Okay, very good.
Okay, yeah, just like we're doing in the subdivision right now. Um
Yeah, and I would note that uh if, if I'm running this meeting, uh, just, just for those people who want to join in, my meetings tend to be one hour and no longer. And uh Miranda will confirm that.
Sure.
Uh, okay, any other questions from the planning commission? And anybody?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Linda. Um, I have a question for the retail end of the, the marijuana, there's, there's a limit to four. If for the growing and cultivating and experimental, is there a limit to the number of those?
No, we have decided not to establish a physical limit on the number of licenses for manufacturing, testing or cultivation. We would like to deal with any possible uh interferences with other town operations strictly through zoning. Now, it is certainly possible that the planning commission's subcommittee may come back saying zoning is not going to be adequate to satisfy your goals. And such a recommendation uh that goes beyond zoning would certainly be welcome, uh welcomed by the BOT. But we suspect that zoning will be entirely adequate for this task.
This is Karen. Um, Roger, you mentioned having two or three um commissioners on the subcommittee, and it seems like we can do a maximum of two with the sunshine laws.
Okay, and that actually is my recommendation, so I put it in here because trustee Taylor would be on that committee. We'd have to publicly notice the, the meeting no matter what, even if there were just two commissioners. Because when you add in trustee Taylor, it, it then becomes a meeting. So it does, at this point, we at least want two commissioners. And since we have to publicly notice it, then it would be okay to have three at that point.
Oh, okay, got it.
I am the bottleneck.
No, I, I think it's a good, unless you see so. Any more questions, any volunteers? Do I see any hands?
This is Billy. I think this would be interesting to be part of this subcommittee. I'll volunteer.
Very good. I see another hand, brother.
Well, I can
I will volunteer.
Uh, if no one else wants to, I can join uh Julian and Miranda and Billy.
It sounds like Jim Reese was open. So I don't know, Steve, if you still want to or if you wanted to leave it Jim and Billy.
Jim, Jim and Billy sound good.
I think that sounds like a great team. All right then, uh, we will uh, we'll accept that Billy and Jim Reese uh to work with Julian to see if uh they can uh make any changes or not make any changes to the uh zoning of the uh cultivation and the manufacturing and testing areas. Uh, sounds good.
And Billy and Jim, I will follow them up with the two of you as well as trustee Taylor to schedule a time for that first meeting.
I would note that first meeting will be in January.
Thank you.
I agree.
And, and you're envisioning
I missed that trustee Taylor, I'm sorry. What, what did you say trustee Taylor? I missed that for the minute.
Terribly sorry. I said the first meeting will be in January.
Thank you.
And, and let me just say, um, if, if this is okay, I think so, but if anybody go along the way, seen how we have the committee, but if you wanted to just listen in or um just follow it, seeing how they're already posting it as a meeting, I think there would be already three people there. So, I mean, I think then that would actually uh alleviate that issue of, oh, we no one else can actually join in the discussion or be part of it because we're already going to post it as a meeting. So if someone down the road wanted to join in or had some input, uh, that actually would free it up because it would be a posted meeting. Okay, uh, staff, did you need anything else from us for the marijuana part of the discussion?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Julian. Um, then we'll move on to the discussion of the subdivision. Um, I can add to it, but uh, Miranda, Cynthia, did you want to just bring up exactly where we are in that? are in that, what we want to do?
Sure, we threw together a super fast PowerPoint. So the subdivision ordinance committee consisting of myself, Cynthia, Karen, Jennifer, Roger and Karen Blakemore, we've met three times, have worked on the recommendations for chapter 17. So on this slide, I just highlighted some of just a brief summary of changes. So there's a handful of updated wording or additional language added just to offer further clarification, and that's kind of scattered throughout the document. We've removed sections that are just not specific to, are relevant to subdivisions. There's also some definitions that were removed, just because they're located elsewhere in the municipal code, so for redundancy, we took those out. But the kind of the big sections that we are looking for the Planning Commission to look over are changes to section 1734, which is the contents of the minor plan application. We've also added some pieces regarding water and wastewater utilities to section 1736, as well as 1747, and then also a stormwater and water flow component to section 17-47. We are still kind of at a point where we need to discuss further as a committee outlots and design standards, and the plan is for the committee to reconvene the first week of January to continue that discussion. So more to come on those pieces. But the ask of the Planning Commission is between now and your January meeting, that you review the chapter 17 subdivisions ordinance redlined recommended changes, and that you come prepared to the January 27th meeting to discuss any additional recommendations or suggested changes that you might have. That document that we reference is in the packet, but I will also send it out as a separate assessment. So we're not looking to have a big discussion on this tonight, but instead are just asking that you take the next six weeks to look this over and come prepared to discuss in January. Roger, anything else to add, or Jennifer, Cynthia?
Yeah, I, I agree with everything you said, and we are going to continue to work on the design standards. So that's the chapter three of our, of the, of the chapter 17 that we have right now. We're well on our way, and I just want to say that I think we got everybody's input, and the biggest change that you'll see is that we worked to take the minor subdivision parts, because even in the draft, was broken up into different parts and you had to move around from page to page and then over to what part of the major subdivision should apply. So we've put everything in, even in down to the definition for minor subdivision, that you can go right to that section and you read right through all the requirements and standards for the minor subdivision, which is what we started a year ago, questioning, you know, minor subdivision and lot lines and those type things. So now I think we have tripled the pages and the amount of stuff there, but you can go right to that section, because that's what we've done the most is minor subdivisions, and you can read right through those, you know, whatever it is, six, seven pages, that everything will be for us there to follow and improve. So that's the part that I, I really was most concerned about, and that's the part that I think is actually you'll see the biggest change from the original draft. Any other comments from the, Karen, or any other comments from the committee?
Billy, yeah, I just want to say that, that sounds great. To me, as someone who's been involved with construction projects, design teams and developers, that having things all kind of in one place, because they're all busy and they have limited bandwidth that they can access it and get through it kind of in a more concise manner, I think that's a really big, good improvement.
All right, any other comments? Or just important that everybody try to read it, review it, and it'll be at the, we'll have it on the agenda for January.
So this is Julian, and I've certainly looked it over, and a veteran of software engineering and functional specifications, I think this is a much cleaner document than the original, and I'm feeling pretty good about it.
Thank you, fantastic.
Yeah, as a scientist, I agree.
I have a comment, this is Jim Reese. I wanted to just make a request to Miranda, you've been really good about this in the past, could you send us like a two week warning as we get back to that? You previously said, hey, don't forget your homework, kind of emails, if you could just do that again as a reminder to spur us, because that's a long ways away.
Yes, that's my expertise, I'd be happy to.
Let's say it again.
Thank you, Jim. All right, if there's no other discussion on the, on the zoning one, then we'll move on to, let me tell them, to the final information is the staff, town staff report.
As the trustee representative, I've been asked to introduce this. The initial, most important thing that we want to bring up is that a 2020 Employee of the Year has been designated. The 2020 Employee of the Year is Miranda Fisher, and I think we all understand why Miranda has been named Employee of the Year. She is involved in everything, she helps keep all of us on track, she helps keep us from making fools of ourselves in meetings by notifying us and telling us what we ought to be saying rather than what we might want to be saying. And therefore, I just want to congratulate Miranda and introduce her to the Planning Commission as the 2020 Employee of the Year. Miranda?
Thank you, thanks trustee Taylor. I asked him to do that because I thought it'd be weird if I did it for myself. But I will celebrate that I'm also sharing this honor with Jen Landon, who is, who stepped into the leadership role in utility, she took over for Nicole Fernandons and Nicole Brazos in that role, and she has just done a phenomenal job leading that team, super dependable, has gone above and beyond, studying very hard to gain the certifications that Nicole had, and so I'm just very honored to share this with her as well. Other kind of staff updates, so as always, COVID changes quite regularly, but we are still in a level red. And the call I had today about COVID, we are seeing a trend downward, as you see by this most recent graph we got from the seventh, from above Boulder County. And so the goal is if we can continue to trend with our numbers, that we can come out of level red and go back to orange. The one area where a county and state officials are concerned, obviously, is the holidays. You know, there could be a chance that we see a spike after both Christmas and New Years, so there's just an ask to continue to be mindful of social distancing and masks and staying within your family. There have been 18 confirmed cases in Netherland, which is still the lowest, but obviously we want to continue to trend downward. So there's a couple graphs in here for you to review. There's also COVID testing tomorrow, it's going to be the last one of the year, from 4:30 to 5, or excuse me, 3:30 to 5:30. Our hope is that we can do more in the new year, but that hasn't been confirmed, so as of right now, tomorrow is our last one. A town worked on a hazard mitigation plan update for the next five years, so we finalized that and we shared it with, we worked on it with the fire protection district. Chris is not here, so I'll just give a quick public works update. The utility shed, which is where the electrical is housed down at Gerstio, is now complete. There is some kind of additional electrical work needed for future installments, but the current electrical receptacle itself is now down at Gerstio. And then, as you may know, we're working on upgrading the visitor center bathrooms so that there's touchless surfaces, and that we're expecting to be done by the end of December, so in the next couple of weeks. And the goal is to then get rid of those porta potties that are currently in the visitor center. And then the last thing is just our holiday candy cane scavenger hunt. We've posted about this quite a bit on Facebook, but we're asking that people, you know, just take some time and go count the candy cane bundles we have around town. If you do that, and you take a picture and you tag it on Facebook, you have a chance to win a prize. So I put our little flyer down here that indicates how to do all that social media posting. And that's our report in a nutshell.
Stephanie, excuse me, Miranda, you just, a question always come up with people, I always ask when, you know, last month it was 12, do they actually know how to confirm the 18 people in Netherland, or is it in our zip code? Do you have any idea how they actually determine that? Well, in some ways, it doesn't matter.
I believe it's by our zip code, I know that the police department gets a list of who those confirmed cases are, just for emergency purposes, but I believe it's by zip code, so it may be kind of the greater Boulder County regions as well.
Yeah, at least, could be Ridge Road or, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, doesn't really matter, yeah, so overall, that's still be great.
That's very impressive.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to other business, does anybody have, staff have any other business? I have one item. If, if there's no other business, the only thing I want to mention is that January, the new year, we actually have election, election of officers need to be on the agenda, and so I want everybody to think of that, and I need to let everybody know that I'm actually facing some serious operation, I have to have my, four inches of my aorta will be replaced January 19th, so I have some major heart surgery ahead of me, and I will miss at least probably two of the meetings. But all that being the same, I absolutely, without the certainty of my health here in the coming year, I need to step down as chair, so certainly I would like everybody to think about that and, you know, work together to, no, I won't be at the meeting in January, so none of these issues, the continuation, I won't be there, but we also need to think about our chair and vice chair for next year, so thanks.
Roger, good luck with your fresh, supercharged aorta.
Well, you're going to have a bigger heart when you're done, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's some kind of jokes, not that, well, no problem. Thanks a lot, though. Yeah, I think when they found an old piece of the wood, wooden pipeline from out here, they dug it up and they thought they would put that in there, it's lasted 100 years.
Oh, sure, neoprene, neoprene, you can't beat it.
All right.
So Miranda and Cynthia, then I guess, as the vice chair, I will then chair the January meeting in Roger's absence.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okey dokey.
Good luck to you, Roger.
No problem. Thank you. Hopefully I can come back and be a good member of the board. At this time, I'm not planning, I'm stuck with them from my position as just a commissioner. I'm looking forward to being a commissioner instead of a chair, it's going to be fun. No other, let's get a motion, do a adjournment.
I'm making motions, Billy.
This is Karen.
My second, this is Linda.
We have a second and a third, all in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Thank you very much, guys.
Planning Commission, Karen, at 9:24 PM.
All right, good night.